So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on Monday, February 9th, 2015. Please join Vice Mayor Pizzillo in the Pledge of Allegiance and please stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On my father, please provide wisdom to all of us on the night so we make good decisions on behalf of our citizens. Also, please oversee all of us, including the people in the audience on their way home, that everybody gets home safe tonight.
Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I make the announcement. We are all here this evening, so let's go to the communication. We have one communication item tonight, and that is the Arizona Commerce Authority will recognize the contribution of Scholler-Albert and Sub-Zero for their partnership on Manufacturing Month, and also for their efforts to promote the city of Goodyear. Rick Howell, Senior Manufacturing Advisor for the Arizona Commerce Authority, and Ernie Prunkner, Marketing Coordinator for the City of Goodyear, to present. Gentlemen? Bring them all up.
Thanks. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank you for your time tonight. We're here to say thank you to Scholler-Albert and Sub-Zero for their partnership during Manufacturing Month with the Lunch and Learn events that we held this past October. The Lunch and Learn events served to showcase these two global leaders in advanced manufacturing and the city of Goodyear to industry professionals and to the metro area at large. Scholler-Albert and Sub-Zero are great community partners, and we're proud to have them in our city. At this time, I'd like to introduce Rick Howell of the Arizona Commerce Authority. Rick was our key contact during Manufacturing Month, and he was instrumental in making the Lunch and Learns a success. We appreciate Rick's efforts to promote these two outstanding firms and the city of Goodyear. Rick, on behalf of everyone, thank you. As a small token of our appreciation, we have this plaque for you.
Very nice. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, seeing you twice in one year is good, Mayor, huh?
I know, I know.
Thank you. I am a resident of Goodyear, too, so I appreciate it.
Well, you can come up to my office anytime, so the invitation stands, okay? Thank you.
Listen, I call on roughly 4,500 manufacturers in the state of Arizona, and I'm here to tell you that you have two of the finest in this room today. Scholler-Arca Systems, Scholler-Albert, and Sub-Zero. And I have the pleasure of working with both of them since I live in this great city. I'd like to present both of them a plaque of our appreciation, and this comes not only from the Arizona Commerce Authority. They manage me. The governor, the governor let us buy these plaques, by the way. The last thing he said, you approved to buy.
It's not out of this year's budgets, we're trying to say.
That's right. Sub-Zero, Ron, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. You bet. Thank you. Ken Yock from Scholler-Arca.
Thank you very much, Peter Abbott, Arizona Manufacturing Month in October. Appreciate the showcase in this market. Thank you very much.
Rick, could we just take a little bit of time? Do you mind if we take and let both of these CEOs come up and just make a comment? So, are you willing to come to the microphone? Oh, I know you are.
I don't know if it's CEO or anything, but yeah, I manage the facility here in Phoenix. And three and a half years ago, we said we were going to come and we're going to bring our 250 jobs, and we're going to do good things, and in seven years, we'd add about 100 jobs here, and we've added well over that. We've doubled it in three years. So Goodyear's been great to work with. Thank you for making that 303 highway just for us. No, it's been a pleasure, the people, the location, everything is the finest in Goodyear. So we're tickled to be here. It was the best business move we've ever made, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
So thank you for the opportunity to thank you. My name is Eckhart Betz. I am the President of Scholler-Arca Systems, Inc., and I'm also on board of the Scholler-Arca Group worldwide. I have actually three reasons to thanking you. The first one is on behalf of my board, when we were looking for a place to be here in the U.S., Goodyear has proven to be very, very helpful and very, very persuasive, so that's why we ended up here. Being President of S.A.S., Inc., I would like to thank you for all the support you have given us to start up shop here and to grow. And personally, I would like to thank you for welcoming me so warmly here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I think it's picture time, so go ahead. All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda items. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone that's sitting in the audience that didn't fill out a card that would like to talk this evening? All right, with that, then we will go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda item 6.1 by title only?
Approved draft minutes from a regular meeting held on January 26, 2015.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? All right, does anyone from the council wish to remove this item? All right, then could I please have a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano and a second from Councilman Osborne. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Good, thank you. We're on to business. The first item on the business are appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Katie Wilken, interim Planning Manager, will present, and recognize Luke Schlosser, Leslie Miller, for their contributions to the city of Goodyear during their time on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a bittersweet night tonight because we have to say goodbye to two of our commissioners, but we're welcoming two new commissioners. But first, I wanted to recognize the work that Luke and Leslie have done. Luke Schlosser has been on the Planning and Zoning Commission since 2008. He has served as Vice Chair of the Commission and has served as Chair for the last two years. Leslie Miller has been on the Planning Commission since 2007, serving for over seven years. They started around the same time, so I have some fun facts for them of their service. They've attended roughly 80 Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, which is way more than, I think, any staff member in Planning and Zoning has attended. They've reviewed approximately 200 cases in their time with the Commission, and that included everything from 8,000-acre master plan communities to approving use permits for new restaurants. It included the Goodyear 2025 General Plan Update, addressing Senate Bill 1598 amongst other legislative actions the state loves to throw at us. And then they've been on long enough that they've gotten to see the fruit of their labor. They've seen some projects built, things like the Goodyear Park and Ride that went before them and now is a wonderful part of our community. And then, of course, businesses like Cerebral Marketplace, which is a great addition to our community. And they have a unique perspective because they started on our Commission kind of toward the end of our boom time, when we were really, really busy, and then they've been through us during the recession, and then they've been here seeing the uptick and our recovery. So they've seen a lot at their time with the city of Goodyear. And, you know, it's not easy being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, as city council knows. You know, it's not always easy to sit before your neighbors when they're upset about something but still recommend approval because it meets the vision and the codes of the city. It's not easy to push developers for higher-quality design when you know it affects the bottom line of their project. But all of our commissioners make a huge difference in our community. Sometimes they don't even get to see it because it's staff's work in the upfront and our development community knowing that they're going to our Commission that allows staff to get some of the things we do and make our reviews so easy. If we had an uninvolved or apathetic Commission, we wouldn't be able to get the level of quality we get, and certainly 94% of our residents might not be happy calling Goodyear as a place to live as they do today. So definitely on behalf of staff, I want to thank Luke and Leslie for their service in the Planning and Zoning Commission. It makes such a difference having involved great members like them, and we are very sad to see them go. So now that I've embarrassed them, I'd like to ask Luke and Leslie to come up and ask the mayor to come down to present them with some certificates of appreciation.
You become really good friends, don't you, when you spend so much time like this? Yeah, absolutely. You're each other's support system and other systems of complaining and chewing over all the problems that arise. But as a mayor, I really appreciate it. I know you both well, and Leslie, you know, I thank you very much because I know you have a lot of activities you could be doing. She lives at Pebble Creek. She's a creeker, and we have lots of activities, and she's given up a great deal while she's been serving on this because what people don't realize, there's a lot of homework. It isn't just at the dais. You just spend a great deal of time, and I see some other members of your team shaking their heads, yes, yes, yes. So I am just really pleased that I'm able to be here to present both. So Leslie, this is, it's small, it doesn't represent the huge contribution, the huge contribution you've made to Goodyear, but I want you to know, I say congratulations and thank you, thank you so much for everything you've done for us.
Thank you. Thank you for the honor.
And Luke, you're a working man, so this hasn't been easy for him, you know? Leslie and I, we have that privilege that we do not, well, I take that back, I'm working now. This is a job, yeah. But you've taken the time, and you came with such great knowledge. I remember your resume when you came, and we were really excited to actually get you to be on ours in Goodyear because I know you sat on some other cities. So we really appreciate it, and so you will be missed, and you may call him once in a while, maybe when he has, you know, the knowledge starts to leave, and so you depend on the history and all of that. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Thank you.
Yes.
Just smile, Leslie.
Thank you. So I was reading all that, I realized maybe we should have done the appointments first because the new members might have snuck out after hearing all of the work that Luke and Leslie have done, but I think they are still back there, so. So the second, there's a couple action items for you to take with this appointment, but the first item is going to reappoint Ryan Peters, who's been serving on the Commission since 2009 and has been serving as our Vice Chair, and also to reappoint Vicki Hamilton, who's been serving since 2012. And we're so happy to have them back on the Commission, so happy that they raise their hands to serve once again. And then you'll also be appointing Jason Kish as a new member to the Commission and Kathleen Maloney as a new member. And I've had a chance to meet them both. I knew Kathleen through the General Plan Committee, and I've been able to meet Jason, and we're so excited about their enthusiasm that they're willing to bring to the Commission, so I know they're going to be two outstanding new members and represent the community well. We have a very great, diverse group for the Planning and Zoning Commission, so staff is very excited to work with the new Commission. So with that, I'll let you go through the action items for the appointments.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, then let's just go on with it, and we'll start with the first one. Could I please have a motion and a second to reappoint Vicki Hamilton? Nice to see you, Vicki. And Ryan Peters to the Planning and Zoning Commission, each for three-year term expiring February 9th, 2018, or until the successors are appointed and qualified. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and who's second? I heard a motion from Councilman Oz, no, was from Campbell, and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion.
I just want to say thank you. I'll say thanks to both Vicki and Ryan for coming back for yet another turn in the barrel, and I won't tie up time on the rest one, but thank you to our new additions. Our city is founded really on the volunteerism that we have, and we've got some great people that stepped forward, and that's one of the things that, I wish we'd almost changed the name of the city to Great Year, so thank you.
Wally?
We'd like to thank Vicki and Ryan for agreeing to do this another three years. Those of us that sit on the Boards and Commission Committee really love it when we know that folks are serving on committees and they really enjoy doing that, and they enjoy it enough that they want to continue their service. And I know how busy both of them are, especially Vicki and Ryan, and we just thank them so much for keeping the continuity of the committee and then doing such an outstanding job for our city.
All right. Sherry, Lortano, Councilman Lortano?
First, I just want to thank Luke and Leslie as well, because I served with both of them when I was on Planning and Zoning, and they're such hard workers, and, you know, thank Ryan and thank everybody for applying for Planning and Zoning because, as Wally just said, it's the volunteers that make the city, and I think you guys are going to start getting a lot busier. So thank you for taking all that time, and I know it takes time away from your family and everything, so thank you all for applying and willing to serve again for Vicki and Ryan and then all the new members as well.
All right, so let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we'll go on to the next. I need a motion and a second to appoint Jason Kish to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term expiring February 9th, 2018, or until successors are appointed or qualified. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard Councilman Holman make the motion, a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll go down to the next one. A motion, please, and a second to appoint Kathleen Maloney to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill Leslie Miller's unexpired term expiring January 31st, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
Salute. Second.
A motion from Councilman Campbell, a second from Joanne Osborne. All right, council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, now we turn it over to the city clerk, who will now administer the oath of loyalty to four Planning and Zoning Commission members.
Mayor, may I say something before, as they come up?
Yes, Councilman Osborne?
I waited to say my comments after we approved them all so they couldn't run away because I understand exactly what Katie was saying. I appreciate each and every one of you taking this position, and Leslie and Luke, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the time you put in. In 2006 and '07, I was the chairman of P&amp;Z, and that was at the height of our building, and I understand what you all have been through, and then we hit a little slow turn. But you know what? Things are getting better, and we're getting better, and we're growing and growing, and so you guys are going to have your work cut out, and I'm excited that you're going to be there for us. Also, two of us on this council, both Sherry and I were on P&amp;Z, and we knew that we wanted to continue to help this city, and so we are always looking for those people in our city that want to continue leadership within our city, and it's always great when they come from Planning and Zoning. So thank you for the time we're putting into this and volunteering for our city.
Thank you, Joanne, for those words. So city clerk, you have it.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Jason Kish.
Do solemnly affirm
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona
State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of Planning and Zoning Commission member
Of Planning and Zoning Commission member.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving. Thank you so much for serving.
I think they'd like to take a picture before you are seated, so.
Michael, will you get a picture, all four of them together, and we can put it on the website? That'd be great. There, newly sworn in commissioners.
Well, thank you very much. All right, let's go to 7.2. The item on business is to consider temporarily suspending the enforcement of Chapter 26 of the Goodyear City Code relating to special events. And Roy Massey, a city attorney, to present. Roy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The action you have in front of you this evening is consideration of Ordinance 151317, which would temporarily suspend Chapter 26 of the City Code, which is the special events ordinance. Shall I wait a second?
Wait a minute. I should have said that before you came up, sorry. I didn't know they had some of the relatives with them. We would have had them stand because it is a special occasion, so I appreciate that the relatives came and were a part of this swearing-in. So it is a proud moment to see someone that you love become involved with a city that you love, so thank you. Go ahead, Roy, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the item in front of you this evening is an Ordinance 151317, which, upon council approval, would suspend Chapter 26 of the City Code, which are our special event ordinance. Currently, or as you may recall, last year in March, we had a council work session on a possible adoption of a special event ordinance, which gives an application process for certain events that occur within the city, and a review and approval process. It was new for the city. We had not had a special events ordinance in the past. There was a lot of discussion by the council on how broadly we should write the ordinance, and we adopted the ordinance in June of last year. At the time it was adopted, council did state that we would probably need to re-review this ordinance sometime in the future, just to see how it goes. And so we were back nine months later, recognizing that the way the ordinance was written may have had some unintended consequences. It may have regulated some areas that we probably didn't really intend to regulate, so there's some potential drafting issues. At this time, we're looking to schedule a new work session for the council towards the end of this month or next month to get council inputs on a rewrite of the special events ordinance. We've begun internal discussions at the staff level involving the attorney's office, clerk's office, and city management, reviewing the ordinance and problems that have been encountered. But in the meantime, there was some discussion, what do we do until we can get a new ordinance in front of the council? So I believe at the, one of the council members may have proposed that can we suspend the ordinance in the meantime? City management asked if that was possible, and it certainly is, so we drafted an ordinance to put the special events ordinance on hold for 90 days to let us work through the potential or the issues that have arisen with the current ordinance. So the item today does suspend the ordinance through May 15th. We will shortly be back in front of the council with a work session to work through the special events ordinance and get council input, and then come back thereafter, prior to the 15th of May, with a new ordinance for council consideration. With that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
I'm surprised at that. I thought we might get some speakers on this one. Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? All right, let's go on. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 15-1317, temporarily suspending the enforcement of Chapter 26 of the Goodyear City Code relating to special events, declaring an emergency, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Roy, if you can refresh my memory, what did we have in place before? We had nothing, did we?
Nothing.
Okay, so rescinding or suspending this is going to have...
Just put us back to where we were a year ago, which was no ordinance.
Okay. The second question that I have that goes with that, then, is, you know, oftentimes when we get ready to make changes to the development community, et cetera, we do a little stakeholder meeting before it comes to council. Is that under consideration, or is that something that staff could consider doing before this ordinance comes back, is perhaps talk to some of the stakeholders that have been very negatively impacted by this, that we might get their feedback? I'd sure like to know that you guys have done that before it comes to us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think that probably makes a lot of sense in this case. Certainly, we were reaching into some areas that we probably really didn't intend to regulate under the ordinance, so working with like some, I know Pebble Creek, the recreation areas, we were regulating some of the events that they were frankly designed to have.
Australia also, right?
Australia, as well.
So I don't want to put it on Pebble Creek
No.
Because everybody says if Pebble Creek wants it, they get it. I don't want it that way.
No, no.
The entire city is looked at. I'm sure Canyon Trails, too.
It's absolutely right. It's some of these facilities that are designed for these types of events that we're regulating that probably we didn't really intend to do. Palm Valley Community Center is another one, regulating just normal course of events that they have. So yes, we can reach out to those types of centers and just the public in general.
Yeah, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think that would be very helpful before it comes to us.
I think so, as well.
Thank you very much.
Comments on council about that? Wally?
Also, on this line of thinking, are we going to ask what type of events they have weekly and monthly so that we don't write in ordinance that they have to get a permit every time the Bocce Ball gets together with 75 people and we have a chili cook-off after we play Bocce Ball?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, I think exactly we need to get that kind of input, but I think even beyond that, we may not apply the special events ordinance to an area that's already zoned for that sort of event.
Okay.
Like a recreational facility, if you're just having your normal course of business, unless you have certain thresholds that go outside of your normal scope, then it shouldn't apply to begin with, is kind of the thoughts.
Okay. When they get everybody together, it could be 500 people, but they're spread in two different locations. And also, I'm real, I want us to have a conversation with all of the HOAs and the block watch folks, because those are the ones that are actually affected as well because they could have a whole neighborhood there. And under the current ordinance, they would have to have a permit every time they had a block watch committee meeting if they had more than 20 people.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah, one thing we thought about was attendance thresholds. Is there a certain level that really needs to be scrutinized, whereas other levels really don't? So, that's certainly a question.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Roy, for bringing this to us, because this really was one of those areas that we were divided on this council of what was proper and gone too far. And so, I'm thrilled that we're suspending it for now and looking for, you know, being proactive and finding the best that suits us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Pizzillo?
I'm in agreement with the others. You know, I'd rather have us suspend it and take a second look at this and get it right, instead of having something go on that, you know, potentially cause headaches out there. So, I'm in agreement with the others.
Councilman Holman?
I wanted to say the same thing. And I think, I'm really proud, I'm very proud to be part of a management team that recognizes... Hit the wrong button. I just wanted to, that our management team is flexible enough to, instead of taking a negative view of this, recognizing that the ordinance did need work and reaching out to determine who we were impacting. And perhaps we had not gotten it right the first time. There's nothing wrong with not getting it right the first time, as long as you're willing to take a second look and make it right. So, I thank for all involved who made that decision. And let's work on it.
I totally agree. And thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. No, don't be sorry for it. Two people can talk about the same stuff, it doesn't matter. I do appreciate it also, because we do really look, we think we're looking in depth to each of these issues that come before us. We all read it, we all study it, and we all go through this. But then, and a case comes up like this. But I, you know, I always say, in this day and age, people have a problem with taking the responsibility on their shoulders when they make the wrong decision. They're ready to take the responsibility when they make the right decision. And so, thank you, council, you know, for, we're all sitting up here and saying, no, we didn't vote the right way. But it came to us, and somebody on the council brought it to attention of management. I appreciate that. And here we are, and we'll start with a clean slate. And I do agree with making sure we have the right representatives there. So, you know, maybe more people will want to come and adjust their boards, but we'd be specific. And I think we need an actual list of their activities that they have from each community, so we can look at this in a more organized manner and have that decision. So, okay? Thank you. Okay, so, now we're ready for a vote. So, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 7-0.
Good, well, that was pretty quick. So, let's just go ahead and do this right now. If anything, any council comments and activities you've seen for the week? Councilman, who was it? Campbell, you got, are you waving at me?
Yes, thank you. I'm sure that Vice Mayor Pizzillo will echo some of my remarks. But I really have to tell you how proud we were of the Park and Recreation staff, Nathan Torres, his group, Diana Ortiz, David Sade, Bruce Kesselmann, Mark Kimball, all of those folks that put together the heart and soul race. It was just phenomenal. I understand that. We had more folks this year that registered, and they had a preregistration package picked up the day before. So, it made the actual day of the race go quite smooth, and it was wonderful. And we had a wonderful crowd of folks who had their babies in strollers and the dogs on the leashes, and everybody was out walking, having a great time. So, I just want to thank everyone. And you made Goodyear very proud, because it's such a great day. And the partnership with Abraza Health and West Valley Hospital is just great. And we appreciate them doing the sponsoring again, and we appreciate their involvement. We, do you want to talk about the other one, Vice Mayor? I don't want to talk about all of them.
That's fine.
Okay, you go ahead and talk about them.
Joe, would you talk about the other one?
Because we were tag teaming together. We followed each other all day, so.
The art culture, the art festival. And again, a tip of the hat to your staff there, Nathan. I mean, it was awesome. I know we've been talking about that year, you know, for quite a while, to try to get some type of event going, where you get diverse cultures and art all coming together. And I know this is just the start. I talked to Gailene, and I know she wants to expand it more. I mean, the vehicles that were around the outside of the park, the art was there, the food, the dancing, the entertainment. I mean, it was a great overall event. Your staff did a great job. In fact, I was telling the mayor, I think I found a car that was around the outside of that that looked great in for the next parade. So, we'll go into that and...
Saying he wants me to ride him.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. But anyway, got also the pleasure to raise some funds for Primrose School. They had a chili cook-off, in which I got to test some of the chili of the top three contestants in there. Great event. I think it was their first year. They're going to have another one for the chili cook-off. And they raised enough money to give the winner of the chili a $1,000 prize and $1,000 also for their charity. So, Karen and her husband, Mark, they did a great job there. So, again, that's kind of the perks of the job. Those are the kind of things I enjoy doing personally. So, again, that's what happened this weekend. Thanks.
Nice. Any other comments from the council? Yeah, Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I attended Flynn Brown, the Arizona Leadership Academy, put on a legislative day down at State Capitol. And I attended that. But one of our keynote speakers was the head of the, I always get their acronyms messed up, but he's the judicial budget guy, is all I can say. And he was kind of giving us the lowdown of the state's budget woes. And it was very interesting to hear. And obviously, we don't have everything put into place yet. But it was nice to hear that state shared revenues was not on their radar to be attacking. And that the state was giving back some of the HERF funds that were supposed to go to the cities. This is what we were being told. Now, on the other hand, though, there were other things that were coming down the pike that may affect us, that are something new, but we'll see what happens. But I at least, you know, felt, was a little positive to hear that maybe the state shared revenues were going to be okay. And then I do have a couple of things for Brian when we get to it.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Stip?
Just a couple of business items. We had a public safety pension board for fire met a couple of weeks ago. And we're going to get an update here in the next couple of weeks from Larry. But just to kind of steal the thunder from that, I went off to repeat it later. Our pension plans here for the city are very strong financially. We're in very good standing with that. That information is actually contained in the audit information that we received. But we're in very good shape with that. And then, secondly, was the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association Board of Directors meeting. That was last week. It seems like it was last month, but it was last week. They're, as you know, are in the transition to find a new director. And there's a small subcommittee working on that. And we'll be interviewing final candidates for the executive director position in April.
Good. Anybody else? Yes. Councilman Holman?
I did have a couple of comments referencing the Art and Culture Act at Palmetier Park. And I was really glad as I went around the grounds, and it was a great layout. Gailene and staff did a tremendous job. But the, I overheard one conversation was actually approached from residents that lived around there, and how delighted they were to see that the park was that way. The music wasn't bothering them, they congested, because parking is a challenge in Palmetier Park. And so, I just wanted, the neighbors seemed delighted with that. And I'm not sure whose idea it was, but to have that traveling museum out... And it was Gailene's idea. What a great, and there were a lot of people going through there. It's very simple at this time. But to have a traveling museum that describes our city and when we incorporated and how we have grown, I just, I was just really, really appreciative of that. And then the other thing is, I don't know if people have noticed in the newspaper and whatever, but we've had a lot of ribbon cuttings for new businesses in the city of Goodyear in the last two or three months. And in this case, it was our mayor and myself who were tag teaming to go and celebrate with the people, because it's so important that we celebrate with them. It's a lot of work to open a business. And they're very joyous, and it's a fun place to be. Champs Auto Repair and Nothing Bunt Cakes were the two we went to this last week. And very joyful and very fun. And it's really good to see ribbon cuttings and new businesses opening.
I totally agree with you. And it was fun. Both of them were. Champs had a lot of family members there. It was, they have a lot of longtime friends and business associates. And it was, it had a real personal feel to it. And I have to tell you, everyone has to love a bundt cake. It's, they're done very, if you haven't gone, you've got to go. It's just an absolutely precious store. And I already purchased, this weekend I had to go to a dinner party, so I purchased two small bundt cakes, all wrapped up with a bone and a flower on it. It was very, very nice to be able to take. It's housewarming, so. Anyway, anybody else? All right. City manager, it's over to you. Do you have any thing that you'd like to say tonight? We didn't check ahead of time, so I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think there may be questions of the manager first.
We did, we did? Oh, I didn't.
No, we didn't do that part.
She does, and I do.
I do.
And I do, too. We all have a question of him.
Ooh, Brian, get your pad.
Did I say something wrong when I said it's his turn? No, okay.
We just didn't do the council, do you have a direction for the manager part?
Oh. Does council have any direction for the manager? Thank you. Sheri?
Okay. Oh, I forgot one thing, though. When we're talking about new businesses, up in Estrella, the Starpoint Cafe, there's a new D's Restaurant, which has Chicago-style food in the Starpoint. So, we have another new business. They haven't done a ribbon cutting, but they are open, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Rose and Michael are gone.
Did we get some information sent to us, so that we can go up there and say hello?
I've heard it's really, really good.
So, we're saying this is a privately owned business?
Privately owned in the Starpoint, and they do catering as well.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. So, there is a small little restaurant up there.
How's the reaction of the citizens or the community?
They seem very happy. They were doing it as catering before and doing just send-out throughout the community up there. And then they took over the cafe, so.
That's very nice. Great, okay.
But for the manager, there's a couple of questions that have come up up in Estrella with some of the, going out to where the Starpoint is, where that, off of Elliott and San Gabriel. A lot of concerns with a lot of increased traffic as that area develops up there. To either see about looking, and they wanted to know about the possibility of either getting a light up there that's triggered when people come out, or some sort of crosswalk, because there's a lot of people, especially at night. You can't really see them cross. So, if there's anything on that, that was one issue that was brought up.
Sheri, where is that again?
Where the Starpoint, where you come out, if you want to go into those neighborhoods, you have to cross four lanes. So, you have to kind of gun it across.
I totally agree.
And either that or some sort of crosswalk. So, because a lot of kids, especially this summer, go to the Starpoint. And they move the crosswalk, but still, it's very hard to get across there. And in the morning, it's almost impossible.
We discussed that before, and I think I was kind of a hard-nosed and said, we do have an area to cross. And so, you know, that's with those unintended consequences. But I was up there the other evening, and I noticed quite a few. And I don't know if it was the time of day I was up there, evening, but you're right. You're right. And I don't know the answer to it, but it definitely needs some help.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lortano, what we can do is, we do have signal lights that are planned out there right now. We will get you a schedule of that. And at the same time, those areas that need a review, we do take into effect traffic, pedestrians, all of that as part of it. But we will, one, get you a list of what's being planned. And then the other is just how we go about evaluating sites for signals and things like that as well.
And I appreciate it. And that was something that was brought up, as that area grows and grows. It gets, maybe last year it wasn't so bad, but there's new business. A new vet also opened up there, too, which I don't know if you all saw when you were up there. But there's a new veterinarian that opened up in the plaza by the Safeway, too. They're brand-new. So, we do have some new businesses up there that are really good. And I think that if we could get the word out on those, too. And then the other question I sent you, there were some questions that came up with regard to some of the issues. And I sent you the email about some roads in Van Buren and Saraville and those areas. And I appreciate you looking into that.
I think that's the same I sent you today, too. I think the same one you're talking about. I just kind of, maybe you haven't had time to read it, because it was late. But it's a couple who's been very active and lived quite a long time in the city and have asked questions in the past, and they're very involved in, you know, if we're doing things the right way and so forth. So, and I think we need to look into it, so.
Yes, Mayor, and Councilmember Lortano, I did receive that. We've had a chance to just take a quick look at it. It really revolves around Van Buren, potential improvements between Estrella Parkway and Saraville, and landscaping that's associated with that, street wits, things like that. As we get these requests, we will obviously inform all of council. But we're pulling that information together. And that's consistent with one of the first points, where are we looking at putting signalization? And in this case, it'd actually be a road widening involved with Van Buren.
And I guess the complaint I'd like to dispel, and so, and maybe we're guilty of it. But they, that west side area there is always saying we're left behind. I know you heard all that, because you heard the same comments. So, what is it we can do? How can we change that? What are the things we could do now, you know, with the budget we have now? I don't know. But can we just kind of take a general overview of that area and see where there could be some? I mean, we know we have some things coming, okay? But I don't know.
Yes, and part of that, we have a fully funded 10-year capital improvement plan. As part of the budget process, we'll be reviewing that again. Want to get your information out as soon as we can, though, vis-à-vis where some of these improvements will be happening, what year they're planned for, that type. The other prerogative of council, as we get into that, and it looks like we're trying to push up some of those things, or there may be some trade-offs, that'll be all part of the budget discussions as well, as far as prioritization.
All right, great. Yes. Joanne Osborne?
A couple of things. First of all, I wanted to bring to your attention, especially Nathan and the ballpark crew. You may already know about this, but Peoria does a Dinner on the Diamond. And I was reading about it today, and it sounds pretty cool. And they've done it for the last three years at their ballpark. And I just thought it might be a neat idea to look at. And the funny thing was, here were three sponsors of that that are in our own city. Nothing Bunt Cakes, Dutch Brothers Coffee.
Wait, there's more than one bundt cake?
No, I know that. No, I'm saying. But they're here also in Goodyear, but they're also from Peoria. And they're, you know, companies that want to sponsor these things. And then there was also a law firm I saw in here that also is in Goodyear, too, has a site. So, I was thinking, wow, these are people that may be interested in doing that in Goodyear. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. A couple of other things.
Just before you go on to the next one, I'll interrupt you. Mayor's privilege again. The bundt company did, at their ribbon cutting, say that he wanted to be involved in the community in Goodyear. So, just so you know that, so.
Well, yeah. A couple of other things. Let's see, the last two weeks, I've been up in Estrella speaking. One as just a speaker for an event, the other one was, of course, the candidate forum. And something that I did notice, along the lines of everything everybody else has been talking about here, is that questions continue to come up about what's happening on this road? When is that road going to be done? And so, I thought that maybe what we should have, if it hasn't been done in a while, but in the in-focus, maybe kind of give, you know, these are the 11 streets that we approved going in the next couple of years, so people can see what's actually happening or when it may be occurring in the next, you know, not too far distant future, but that they would actually see what was going on, because they're really interested. Oh, is something coming? They're asking, oh, what's going on, you know? They're asking, oh, what's going on, you know, or when is it going to happen? So that might be a tool to use for that. Another thing that would, as good old Gary Gelsner would always say, would behoove us to do is that January 1st, a new sales tax law came into play. And that is, in the state of Arizona, that if someone from another state purchases something, say, in your store, they can't say, oh, well, I'll pay that sales tax in my state. From here on, January 1st on, if somebody comes into my store and wants to buy a diamond ring from Wisconsin's, they can't say, oh, you know, you can't charge me here, I'll pay it in Wisconsin, you have to do it here now. I got a lot of that through Christmas and out-of-country people, and that's no longer in effect. And I think it would behoove us as a city to tell our businesses here in Goodyear, because, you know what? My CPA brought it to my attention. I did not know about it. And so that's something that others may not know about either. The last thing I had was, I know I asked a couple of weeks ago, we are so happy to have Franklin Pierce within our city, and we've done a lot of things to be partners with them. I don't understand why they continue to have a banner for a sign on our building. And so I would like to hear the response about that.
Yes, and we'll get the balance of that for council. Part of it is, is the sign guidelines for this area need to be updated. We have been working with Franklin Pierce, as I understand, over the past year. And there have been discussions lately, again, with them. What we'll do is, outside of this, we'll get you the latest, because we are aware of that. You did bring that to our attention, Councilmember Osborne. And it is something that we have started working with them, as well as looking at what our, our sign guidelines are for this complex. So all of that's pieced together, but we will get you an update, continue to get you updates, because the goal is get a sign up there for them instead of the banner.
It's, you know, it's just one of those things that other businesses within our city would not be allowed to, to have that, and especially this length of time on our own building. So I think it needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Bill, I interrupted you, so you had some more to say. Go ahead.
No, I just, I, I had two questions for the manager. One was, over the weekend, heard a lot of feedback from folks in the Pebble Creek community about a public forum that's going to be held in Pebble Creek. The way that they were describing it was for the noise issues on the 10 and the 303. And I don't know if that was a misunderstanding between that or a discussion about SR 30, because I know that that is also under public. So I'm.
Wally has that. I have it.
That's awesome, but I have no idea what it is.
Well, we've been working on this for nine months, Bill. And Matt has had meetings with ADOT. That Pebble Creek is questioning ADOT why they have not built the sound wall on 303 to the west of all of our subdivision, when they in fact completed the sound wall for all of Sun City and Sun City Grand. And that was the bone of contention, is that the noise is of such that any home that's built on the west side of Pebble Creek Parkway has the noise factor from the freeways now. The meeting that we're going to have, the 26th or 27th, whenever it is, I forgot, it was instigated at the request of Pebble Creek Homeowners Association with ADOT. And they're going to talk to them again. What they're trying to do is to get them to move up the timeline, because, Matt, do you remember when they said they were going, what the year they were going to do the sound wall? Wasn't it like 2025 or something? Do you remember?
Rebecca.
Or maybe 2030?
Would also ask our engineering director.
Well, Matt had the meeting with them for me, so that's, that's all I was asking.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, I never met directly with ADOT. I pass that off to our engineering folks for them to do the interfacing with the agency on our behalf. So I'll let Rebecca speak to that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. The meeting is actually on Wednesday, February 25th, and it's from 6:30 to 9 o'clock. And it's really a learning experience for constituents to come in and hear how ADOT performs their noise studies. I think they are going to be responding specifically to a request from the Homeowners Association regarding the noise wall that was installed on the south side of 10, because they did an additional analysis just of five or six houses on the north side of McDowell. My understanding is it wasn't, the topic of 303 was not on that agenda.
No, that's my understanding, too. We're not talking about 303. We're talking about the sound wall.
Okay.
So, did you hear, did someone say to you it was going to be on three, about 303?
Well, then, this is a multifaceted problem. Yes, they think it's about the 303 as well.
All right, well, they need to read the E group, because it specifically says it's not about 303.
Correct. That's problem one. Problem two, I don't know a thing about this. And if our staff is working on a public meeting, I at least ought to know. And I think everybody on this council ought to know what's going on. It is a big deal in that community, and that community is a big deal, as they all are to all of us. And if we've got staff investing time in tracking down these kinds of issues that are important to our citizens, we all ought to know. And I'm, I'm very disappointed in the fact that we don't know what's happening, especially if we're bringing in an outside agency. So please, please, keep us informed of what's going on. This is not complicated, I don't think. And I'm sorry to be very frustrated about it, but.
I think what happens sometimes, individual council, you know, I've done the same thing before, you go before and you say, hey, listen, I just heard this. And staff gets busy looking into it, and it probably is an omission and probably needs to be worked on. And the other thing the council needs to know is that Wally's done a lot of work on this, but she doesn't take 100% ownership in this.
No, I don't have any ownership. I just pass it on.
She just happens to live in the community. So many of us live in different communities, and, you know, you hear things about Palm Valley, and you hear things about your community. So really, we should be more forthcoming to staff when we come and say, and what I try to do every now and then, I know you've gotten some things from me, I say to Matt, hey, send it to the rest of the council, because I think this information will be useful. If it isn't, you'll throw it away. But, so we just need more cognizant of that.
Well, Mayor, you know, we get this, you know, update every week about council activities and things that have gone on and whatnot. That would, that's the perfect forum for us to be informed of what, of what's happening. And if each of us are doing that, we're supposed to be working as, as a team together to get these issues and to be standing in front of hundreds of people and being completely dumbfounded with, with something as important as ADOT coming into our city to have a public meeting was a little more than embarrassing.
Well, the, our HOA reached out to ADOT. The city did not initiate this whatsoever. I just happened to talk to them.
Right, but if Matt knows and Rebecca knows, then somebody in this city knew.
But Matt knows because I addressed the salespeople at Pebble Creek six months ago, and they asked what was the status of the sound wall. And I just asked Matt to look into it and let him know, we didn't do anything, it was simply a question. But I found out recently that the HOA, on their own, contacted ADOT on their own for a meeting, and then they have brought the city in. The city has had nothing to do with setting up the meeting or doing anything. It's all on the Pebble Creek HOA for the Pebble Creek homeowners who live there. So that's why not all of us knew. The only reason why I knew is because Pebble Creek, a couple of people called and said, are you going to be there? And I said, I don't know anything about it, but tell me and I'll try to come if I can.
No, and, you know, I can certainly understand how that thing can grab a life of its own and really start moving, especially, you know, in, in as tight a community as Pebble Creek. I don't, I don't have any issue with that. And I'm, you know, would certainly hope that ADOT isn't going to come in and hold a public meeting in our community without at least telling us. I'm pretty sure they don't.
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure they wouldn't do that. But if they did, then we, yet as a city, have yet another issue. I had a, a private meeting with somebody from APS who got completely blindsided by another city in this valley, completely shocked that there wouldn't be an outreach. And it was shocking to me, given the relationships that we have with all of our public utilities. And I consider ADOT a public utility for all intents and purposes. So I certainly hope that our lines of communication are at least strong enough that if they're going to come into the city, they at least have told us. So that, so in, in any event, if there's, if there is information that the city has regarding this issue, I would greatly like to hear about it before the public meeting. So that is question one. Question two is, now it's going to sound a little self-serving, but I'm going to look at Michelle and say, when you find out when Reganose is opening, would you please send out something on Reganose?
Yes, actually, that, we found out, just found out, it's March 2nd, soft opening, soft opening. So we're not sure exactly what that means yet, stay tuned, but we're staying on top of that. That's the latest, and, and we'll keep you informed.
I suppose that means there's not going to be ribbon cutting at that time.
I don't know how they define soft opening at this time.
Okay. Any other comments on this subject matter? This is, this is good. Bill, thank you for being so forthright, coming in and talking about it tonight. It's the only way that we're all made aware of what's going on.
Okay, I, I have two, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
It's on. Okay, I have two things. This is a request of the city manager, and I don't know if you're, you can do it, because it may be too late. But since Councilmember Holman brought up the traveling museum, it has been put together by Dr. Denise Bates, who is a historian from ASU. And she has a wonderful history of this city, that she is willing to have it at every event our city has or participates. And I asked her if we would see this at the Tale of Two Cities, and she said, no, we weren't able to get in. So could you do something to get it in so that we could have that traveling museum? And she could man it for that particular event. But if we start having a lot of events, she's going to work with the Three Rivers Historical Society to see if those folks would partner with her so that they could take turns manning the event. And she's going to add more to the history of Goodyear as she makes her boards, and they're just wonderful.
Can I add a little bit to this conversation? If in fact this does come about and the historical Goodyear would be chosen, they need help. So my suggestion would be that this would be a good event for the youth, the youth, our youth commission.
Youth commission, sure.
Okay? The last meeting that I attended, they were really pleading to bring younger people in. Well, I stood up and suggested you need to bring some younger people in. You know, we're all getting older and.
Right.
Going to different places, and, and so, some to the same places. But, you know, we, they need help, and they want to keep it vibrant. And, and I said, well, we need to get our young people interested in history. And so I'm going to throw that out to you, Matt and Rob, that this would be really, and really, if you would help them with this and, and bring the youth commission to talk to them, and they're agreed to do it, they, they would open their arms and welcome them, so, okay.
My second request to the city manager is, is the city of Goodyear itself on LinkedIn? And if not, we need to be on it.
I am.
I mean, I am.
I know, I'm kidding.
But our city needs to be on it, because I was at a meeting at NLC, and they said that's really critical for cities who are looking for businesses to come and locate in their city, that they need to have a very active website, and they have to be on LinkedIn.
Yes.
And I don't think we are, because I can't find it.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, economic development is on LinkedIn. We do know that, and several of us individually are, as far as the city in total. I don't have those details right now.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. That's it. That's my two. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'm turning it over to the city manager.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, there were several items that were brought up that we'll be following up on. And we'll be getting that out to you as we get the information. And in my weekly managers' report, I'll let you know where we're going with this information, what has been asked, instead of going through each of these details tonight. So, so we'll get that to you. And then, as it relates to, and I appreciate council talking and giving, recognizing the efforts of staff, and I won't go through all the information, but a couple that were mentioned, just some of the, the facts around them, the art and culture event highlights that were brought up. That was actually our, our commissions that came up with that new event, Arts of Cultures Expo. And 1,500 attended the event, which is amazing when you think about it throughout that day. 1,500 for that size park. 30 vendors and performers represented 12 various cultures. The community, the attendees participated in two community murals, art activities, intergenerational drum circle. And it'd already been talked about, the Shoe and Shine Car Show, that's what it was officially called, and a lot of comments about the traveling or the mobile, mobile museum, not mobile, but mobile.
Yes.
Make sure that that's correct. The Heart and Soul Event Highlights, that was our 10th annual, by the way, and it's 5K race and fun walk. And we had 700 individuals in attendance, 400 were registered for the actual event. And so a lot of vendor booths there, 22 healthy activity vendors that really focused on one of the core values of the city, and that's fitness and wellness. And they had gymnastics as well. So Brazzo Health, West Valley Hospital, they were sponsors, as well as Cancer Treatment Center of America. So it's always good to have our, our, our health partners working with us. And I understand there was a short mascot race, and 10 participants, bounce houses, face paintings, so it was a very, very good event for the, the kids. And thank you for the, for council in recognizing that. My last item is mostly bitter, a little bit sweet, and that is Mr. Matt Legori. This'll be his last council meeting. I do want to bring him up here. He doesn't know it. And I'll read a little bit about him while he's making his way up here. But he started working as a council assistant September 2012. He was brand new to city government, so we had to train the heck out of him. And he, in all seriousness, he dedicated himself to really learning the structure and functions in municipal government. And during this time, he also finished completing his master's degree in public policy, so that was no small feat, as many that are, some are going through that right now. I feel like he always gave the extra effort to council, and he worked hard on developing the relationships with you. And a couple of accomplishments I'd like to cite is, he really managed the council orientation program, which works with the new council members as they come on board. And working with the youth commission really changed that, as far as their mission, develop a municipal government educational component, as well as what they do in the, as far as community service. And then, most recently, recreated the Goodyear Citizen Academy. I have to tell you, was, many of you have heard about that already, as far as the successes we've been realizing, but we have 40 members of our public that are part of that. They've been, and they'll have attended five Citizen Academy sessions. Now, Matt's not allowed to leave till that last session's over. Other than the graduation, you're coming back on your own dime, by the way. But, you know, December 1st, he was promoted to the assistant to the mayor, and that's just a tribute to Matt really learning local government. And he not only worked with the mayor, but continued to work with the council as well. So very fortunate, Matt, to have had you as an employee here. Know you're leaving for a great opportunity, and, and know you're going to hit a home run there. So, thank you.
I'm going to open just a moment to the council for any comments. Anybody like to talk about Matt a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Oh, yeah. Councilman Stip.
No, I'll save the other stuff for, for some other time. But, you know, Matt, you know, as, as time has gone on, obviously, sharing the, the pains of going to school together at the same time, I have always appreciated your counsel and your hard work. And, you know, it's very unfortunate that you're leaving us, but certainly for a great opportunity. And once again, I'm losing another friend that I didn't know that I had before I started this. So at the end of, you know, this council run, whenever that may be, I will have gained another new friend. So thank you very much, and best of luck to you.
Sherry?
I already told you how much we're going to miss you, but you've got to do, and you have such a great, bright future ahead of you for you and your family, and we're so very proud of you. And I want to say thank you for everything you've done. You've always gone the extra effort. You took care of, like, herding six cats here. And we always weren't always perfect, and we always didn't show up where we were supposed to be. And you always did, went above and beyond. So I, words cannot express how grateful I am for all the work you've done. So words cannot express how grateful I am for all the work you've done. So good luck to you, your wife, and keep in touch, because we are friends, and we do care about you very much. We want to see great things from you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to miss you. We're going to have to pass back and forth some of those movie quotes. What I'm hoping is, over time, those little twitches that you picked up, you know, as a result of working with us, will kind of go away, and normalcy will start to, you know, get back in together again. But again, it's an excellent opportunity for you. Miss you, and I'm sure we'll run across each other down the road somewhere, so you've got that going for you, you know, which is nice.
For me, sure.
Yeah.
Councilman Holman?
Well, Matt, I have to tell you, I've been on council for a year and a half. You hadn't been with Goodyear all that long, on a scale of 1 to 10, but I never would have known it. You're a professional, you are ever so helpful, and you have, what I really appreciated is part of your consideration was to make us look good. And I do appreciate you, I'm very proud for you, and just keep doing what you've been doing, and there's no limit to what you'll achieve.
Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, golly, every now and then, someone will come in your life, and you really take a second look at someone, and you're one of those rising stars, Matt. We did not know you, we did not know your background, but you didn't miss a beat. And very quickly, you earned our trust and our respect, and we, and that's hard to do sometimes, especially in the arena that we're in. But we do thank you for all the many, many hours of extra things that you did for every single one of us, because all of us had our own issues, and all of us had our own agenda, and all of us had you running in 50 million different directions. But you handled it very professionally, and you really, if you thought we were going out on a limb, you very wisely ruled us back in, so we didn't look too stupid. And we do thank you for that. But we're so happy for you, and we expect great things out of you, Matt. I think this is just the start of something really, really big, and as all of us want you to do, we want you to stay in touch with us, and, because you're still part of our family, even though you may not be here. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Well, I'll try not to get teary-eyed, but, you know, Matt's like my fifth child. I mothered him to death, I'm sure. But you know what? You shine, and you know that's our joke, but you really do shine, and I am very proud of you. We will miss you, and I know you have a bright future. Things are going to be great, always keep level-headed, and you're going to go far. But keep in contact with us, because we know that there will always be something that you can give to us that is important, and we always do appreciate that information that you have. Thank you, Matt. I didn't realize tonight was last night, dang it. Thank you.
Oh, it's not quite as last night. The mayor's going to hold a couple of things, but anyway. Well, Matt, it's been a short relationship, in a sense, as my assistant, but I don't know if the public understands that you've been doing not just the mayor, but you've been doing the council, and that you've taken on a huge task. And I'm very demanding and needy, so a lot of your time is with the mayor. And yet, I can remember getting emails at 11 o'clock at night. So he was home, we took the work home and was working on it. So, and it wasn't easy. Of course, I, you know, when Rob went, that was something new for me, but I didn't want to prevent him from moving up, because he was, I knew his talent, and I knew he could do inter-gov and do it well. And I feel the same way about you. I mean, even if I could prevent you from going, if there was some technical way, I would, I don't think, I don't think I would do it. Because you do, you have, you have a huge political sense. And I think working from, for Senator McCain's office, and I know the direction you want to go in, and how lucky we are that you have spent some time learning about city government, because you someday are going to use that, and it's going to be to the advantage of Goodyear and to other cities. And so I guess I charge you with that, to remember your experiences here, and remember who really, yeah, well, and who the city really serves. They really serve the people. We are in the face with the people. We shake their hands, we hug them, we cry for them. So that, it's valuable. And, you know, you can read it in a book, but you have to live it, to feel it, to know what you think is right and wrong. So I thank you for your dedication to me in this short period of time. And as I said, I'm not quite done with him. Poor guy, he wants to leave, but I, you know, I've got him, he's been writing speeches, and we've been working on it.
We've got a couple of weeks left.
We've got, we've got some things, important things we're going to be doing left. But again, I just want you to know I really care, and I wish you and your wife well. And it's still a small area, we'll probably run into each other, all of us, at one event or not.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So again, thank you very much. Let's get him around.
Well, I don't want to talk too long, because I'll probably get all choked up, and that's the last thing I want to do up here. But I can't thank you all enough for the last two and a half years. It's been an honor and privilege to serve you all. I've learned so much from each and every one of you, and I've gotten to know all of your families and all of you very personally, and gained seven friends, you know, just here on the dais, and then countless more standing behind me, and learned so much from all of you guys. So I know the word or the term "bittersweet" has been used tonight, and that's about the perfect way to describe this whole situation. I was very conflicted when this opportunity came up, but I think in the long run, it'll be good for me. And I've told you all before that you'll be seeing me with Southwest Gas, I'll be coming out here as the local government affairs person, you'll be my client. So I told Joe, Vice Mayor Fazillo, I said, you can't give me, can't heckle me too much when I come to visit you guys, so. He wouldn't, he wouldn't promise me anything, so I don't know if I can count on that or not. But again, just want to tell you how grateful I am for the opportunity that I was given here, and what an awesome ride it's been, and you'll always have a friend and ally in me, and calling me anytime.
Great. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All cleared? All right. So we're finished with that. So before I adjourn, I just wanted to remind you, the next work session is on the 23rd at 5 o'clock, and the regular meeting is at 6 o'clock. Now, when I adjourn this meeting, we're going to open the special meeting, and...